We're good to go. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, December 11th meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Luisee.
Present.
Trustee Leo.
Present.
Trustee Alfasi.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am happy to be here tonight. I have some appointments to make tonight. There is only one that's on your agenda, but I have a couple more for the Assessment Review Board, which is going to meet in two months, and we have some vacancies and we can't have that. So, our first appointment tonight is appointing Leslie Roar to the Library Board to fill the unexpired term of Mary Duggan. Do I have a motion for that?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
I want to thank Mary for her years of service on that Library Board.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Okay, I have a couple of appointments here. First is appointing Adolfo R. Rueda to the Assessment Review Board to fill an unexpired term to September 30th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Next is appointing John E. Hanley to the Assessment Review Board to fill an unexpired term to September 30th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Next is reappointing John Lee to the Assessment Review Board to a new term to expire September 30, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And finally, reappointing Kathy Galucci as Chairperson of the Assessment Review Board to a new term to expire September 30, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. So, for presentations tonight, we are blessed to have with us, Tuckahoe, you're smiling back there, Tuckahoe's own Luigi Marcoccia, who sat, Lou, where did you sit? Over here? You sat there, and I always had the anchor chair, so come on up. You can come to the microphone. For those who do not know, Mr. Marcoccia is on the Eastchester Town Board, and he is liaison to this board, and I saw this past week, they worked on their budget, so you can talk to us about that.
Well, thank you for having me, Mayor Eklund and trustees. It's always great to be here, and as the mayor indicated, I do just want to go over some high-level bullet points here of the town budget. That's probably a good indication of what you're going to be looking at, you know, come May, or maybe even sooner, for your own budget. But before I continue, I just want to wish everyone, before I forget, a happy holiday and Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all of you and to the residents of Tuckahoe. But the budget, it's always tough, it's never easy, and we've been able to stay under the tax cap since its inception, and it only gets harder. This year, we were somewhat lucky in that the assessed value actually ticked up a little bit. So, usually, we start the budget, two points in the hole. This year, we didn't. We started, you know, at a little bit higher, which helped us a little bit. Not a lot higher, but it's better than being in the hole and trying to climb out. So, that was a positive. One of the other things was the sales tax came in a little stronger than anticipated, and so did the mortgage tax. Not a lot, but like I said, you know, when multiple factors start adding up, it makes for a little bit of an easier budget. And because of that, we were able to give raises pretty much, you know, across the board, not big raises, but raises, and we're always happy to be able to do that, because we do have excellent employees. And as many people know, particularly in the town, there's been a significant reduction through attrition in employees over Supervisor Calavita's time in office there. So, they're doing a lot more work, and they deserve to get paid a little more. So, what does that mean for Tuckahoe? A couple of years ago, I think it might have been last year, there was actually a slight decrease, and this year, there's a slight increase, and it's 1.08%. And that's, so for a village of Tuckahoe assessment of 7,300, they will pay $2.76 more per year, or 23 cents a month. So, it's, you know, a cup of coffee more a year. And like I said, it's not easy to get there, but it's something that we're proud of, something that we work hard to do every year. And that includes some funding for the Tuckahoe Community Center, $30,000, which will be utilized, you know, by the village for the community center, and the town was happy to do that. I also do want to mention that healthcare premiums increased 8.8% in the coming year, 2018, that's what we're looking at. And one of the most significant obligations of the town, which has the greatest impact on this budget, is our pension contribution. The 2018-19 pension contribution estimated to be $2.3 million, which is a minor decrease from prior years, which is also another good thing. And we have a chart that kind of maps it out, but essentially, that was another thing that went down. Not a lot, but usually, we're on the other side of it. So, I'm not saying it was, you know, it's all roses, but it's a little better than it has been over the last four or five years. So...
And Luigi, that's a factor of the pension up in the state doing better, because the stock market's doing well, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the funds performing well. We were hoping a bigger increase, but hey, look, they're going in the right direction. They're making money. When was it? 2008. The town was paying nothing. You know, municipalities, not only the town, but the villages, and you know, you guys have a tremendous obligation as well. But that number was fully funded by the state. And then they ran into, you know, 2008, 2009, 2010, like everyone else did, and municipalities needed to contribute. So, I think we reached the top, and now hopefully we're, you know, the market is being a little nicer to everybody, so that's been helpful. And that's it. And I also wanted to mention that there's been some retirements. We had two retirements in Highway. We had one retirement in the Assessor's Office, and we had one retirement in Senior Services Recreation. And between the four of them, they served 95 years of service in the town, so we congratulate them, we wish them well. And basically, I think that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
No, I'll tell you, we really appreciate the support that you give the village. I know that, you know, every dollar has an impact, and for you to maintain that funding for us, the $30,000, that's a substantial item for us. So, I want to thank you on the Board for keeping that in, for keeping that in your budget, which of course is an offset to ours. And, you know, there's a lot of other things that the town provides. One very significant thing is the services of the assessor. We actually had a meeting on Thursday night with your slash our assessor, and I made a point of handing him a $1 bill, because that's how much money we pay him, but you guys pay his salary. So, you know, these are, you know, a lot of things like that, they make a difference for us. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
And thank you. You know what? We're the beneficiaries of a lot from the village too, so we really, we thank all of you, all that you do, and all, you know, the community center is always open for us, the parks, you name it, and we appreciate that.
It's a good partnership.
Yeah. So, hopefully, that will continue. I know it will continue. You have a friend up at the town, and we'll work through whatever the issues are.
Please give our holiday best to your colleagues on the Board.
Exactly. And please extend, you know, our congratulations to them on a fine budget. You know, they did a great job, you know, keeping our taxes as low as possible.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Lou.
Good night, Lou.
All right, that's gonna, we have no public hearings tonight, so that's going to bring me to the adoption of minutes, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 13th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that will bring us to our first opportunity to address the Board on anything that's on tonight's agenda. And if not, I'm going to move into resolutions. Resolution number one is authorizing, we do this every year, free, and aligned, free, short-term parking in the business districts of the village to encourage local shopping during the holidays. This is going to occur from December 21st through December 25th. So, just to be clear, that's on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Monday. Of course, you don't feed the meters on Sunday. So, we are happy to do that every year. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing the appointment of Robert Federico as DPW Labor. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
I'm just going to mention that Robert's been a part-time seasonal laborer for quite a while now, and we welcome him to the Department on a full-time basis now.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
Congratulations, Robert, in favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing a declaration of official intent to reimburse debt obligations in the amount not to exceed $121,000 for proceeds of indebtedness for the removal of the pedestrian footbridge over the MTA railroad tracks. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
So, we are getting there. Maybe February, Mr. Burke, he's, okay, maybe February. This is going to happen. It's been there a long time. So, glad we're taking it down before it falls down, and we're going to also videotape this. So, we're going to get out there, and we assume it's going to be in the middle of the night, and our goal is to get Wade. He doesn't realize that he's in the back of the room there. He's probably shaking his head like. But we're going to get Wade out there, and I'll be out there with him, and we're going to videotape this. Should be quite interesting. In addition to MTA removing that bridge, DPW has a lot of work to go ahead and restore the foundation of either side of that bridge, so we'll keep everyone, you know, up to speed on the process of that, so.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing a tax sorcery settlement for Les Todd Realty Corp. for assessment years 2015 to 2017, with street address of 88 Lake Avenue, Section 32, Block 7, Lot 1A, and the amount of $4,482.78. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And last resolution is Resolution number five, authorizing the approval of payment of vouchers in the amount of $1,460,358.99. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
And this is a big number, but as trustee, or I'm sorry trustee, look at that, as Councilman Marcoccia, boy, I'm dating myself, Lou, mentioned, about a third of this payment is pension. Yeah. Wow, okay. So, it's a substantial amount of this is going to the pension program.
Trustee Luisee.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. For discussion item tonight, we had, as I had mentioned earlier, on Thursday night, we invited in our, the town's assessor, which is also the village's assessor, as well as our tax sorcery council, Aldo, our new tax sorcery council, Aldo Vitaglano. I got to make sure I get that right. So, we wanted to have a conversation with him. We do this about once a year, just to have a, you know, an update as to, are we doing things right? Are we fighting these tax cert claims aggressively enough? Is there something else we should be doing, doing something different? And so, and each time we have these meetings, we learn a little bit more about the very complicated assessment process. And, you know, at the end of the day, it really turns, you know, it comes down to the only way that a municipality like Tuckahoe would get away from having somebody challenge their assessment is if there is an absolute reevaluation of all properties in the municipality, and that really kind of starts from the town. So, you know, it's a conversation that I'm sure, I know that we've had it over the years. It's an extremely, extremely expensive, you know, endeavor to undertake, so it's just an ongoing conversation I think that we'll be having. But as Councilman Marcoccia said, and we're seeing the same thing, that fortunately, the trend of the downward value of assessments, which is really the value of all the property in your community, that has stabilized and is actually reversing itself. So, hopefully, when we're working on our budget process coming up in another month, we're going to see some of the same gains that Luigi talked about. So, we're optimistic that this tax sorcery train is going to be at least slowed down, if not possibly stopped. So, I don't know if anybody else wants to talk about that whole assessment. It's a very complicated issue.
Well, just one comment, Mr. Mayor. I remember we talked about, you know, and the folks at home should know this, you know, should we, the village, do a reassessment, a revow? And time and time again, we've asked that same question, and basically, what's come back to us is it would not make sense unless the town itself did a whole revow. And sometimes, it doesn't make sense for the town to do a whole revow unless the county does a whole revow. So, it's kind of a slippery slope, and it costs a lot of money. It costs well over a million dollars if we were going to do it, probably 2, 2.5 to do it. So, difficult, difficult situation.
You raise a good point. I sit on the board, the executive board of the Westchester Municipal Officials Association, and in our sessions, we talk about that quite often, that it would be wonderful if the county would actually spearhead this, and if the county did a county-wide revow, everyone could adopt that. And that, you know, by far, would be the simplest solution. We'll see if that ever happens. So, we're going to now move on to our departmental reports to the Board, and we're going to start with our Chief of Police, Chief John Costanza.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board. I think Wade was wondering why we're not doing this in July instead of dead of winter. Just some seasonal announcement. The winter parking regulations will now be going into effect this week. We'll be flipping signs. So, the alternate side of the street parking restrictions will be suspended as the signs get switched. They are often replaced with snow zone parking signs. The snow zone parking means that you cannot park in that area when snow or sleet first begins to fall and ending 12 hours after snow stops falling. So, that is a, usually, years ago, we used to have snow, no parking December 15th to March 1st. In many of these areas, the compromise, at the request of the village residents, was to allow parking when there was not snow on, you know, snowfall. So, it is a compromise, but they are in critical areas where snow removal has to be facilitated, and the roads are narrow. So, when cars are parked illegally, it gets in the way to plows, doesn't allow for emergency vehicle access, and it becomes a problem. The fine is hefty at $75 for people who park in violation. And when there is a real snow emergency, which has, happens usually three or four times a winter, where we have blizzard-like conditions, those cars will be towed when they're parked illegally. So, we want to ask all our residents to please pay attention to this change. When the snow zone signs go up, to be aware that once the snow begins to fall, that's when they're in effect. So, even if it's 3 o'clock in the morning, you know, they have to pay attention to the forecast and make sure, and they're on the side of not parking there if they believe that there's going to be inclement weather. Many of the areas have no parking 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM. That goes into effect on December 15th and goes through March 1st. It's mostly in the business districts where we have metered parking, but there are some sections of the village that overnight parking is not allowed, 3:00 to 6:00. So, again, that's written into the ordinance. Even though the signs are up year-round, it is only in effect on December 15th to March 1st, and we will be issuing warnings the first few days of the change. And then there are still just a small pocket of area that is December 15th to March 1st, and clearly, that's wherever that is posted. So, just be aware of the changes, and our maintenance staff are switching the signs this week. And then, in the spirit of the season, I just want to take an opportunity to thank the men and women of the Tuckahoe Police Department, not only for what they do every day in keeping our community safe, but the extra things that they do. And sometimes, many people in the community don't know what goes on and the things they do to help our community. And just, for instance, at Thanksgiving, they gave away, PBA donated 50 turkeys to some of our faith-based groups and to several residents over a series of a couple of days. Went to St. Leonard's, purchased all the turkeys, and then delivered them to our churches and to many of our residents who are in need. So, I'm really proud of what they do in taking that, not only the monetary donation of it, but taking their time, on their time off, to make those deliveries. And I have to acknowledge the Shiloh Baptist Church, because they paid it forward. With many of the turkeys that were given to them to give to the parishioners, they turned around, the parishioners went home and cooked many of those turkeys, and then brought them to the Y and Yonkers and served the Thanksgiving meal. So, congratulations and bless them for doing that, and like they said, for paying it forward. What members of the Department did last week, went to Blaisdale Children's Hospital and spent time with many of the patients there, and also delivered a large amount of toys that will be given out at Christmas time. So, again, the PBA stepped forward and, again, not only purchased all the toys, but spent their own time with the children, and it was a win-win. I think the children really appreciated, and I think the men and women of the Police Department came home feeling really good about what they did. So, again, congratulations to them. And all the things, you know, they participated in our traffic safety events and our open house event over the course of the year. They don't get paid for that. They just come in on their own time. So, I just want to take a moment and say thank you. I'm very proud of what they do, and I wanted to make sure that I acknowledged it publicly.
You know, I say it all the time, but you have a very, very special team of people who work with you, so I agree with you 100%.
Thank you. And just, Happy Hanukkah to all our residents, and Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, or whatever you celebrate joyous season to all our residents, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Chief. You too.
Thank you.
Mr. DiMarco, looks like you had to use a little bit of salt this weekend, huh?
Not much, but we did use a little bit of salt. Hopefully, that's the end of the season. I think we have a lot more ahead of us. I love winters. But I also, I want to welcome also Robert Federico to the DPW staff. Robert's been working for us as a seasonal for less than a year, and, you know, he's proven that he's, you know, he'll be a great asset to the Department of Public Works, as well as to all the residents in Tuckahoe. So, I welcome him to the Department. Leaf season, leaf season is still upon us, and I don't think these leaves will ever finish falling, but I think we're almost there. We've extended the leaf pickup. Our actual dates are October 15th to December 1st, and this week, we're still, this is going to be probably the final week that we'll be vacuuming the leaves. So, if you haven't put your leaves out yet by curbside, I recommend that you do it tomorrow morning, because we're going to be making our last rounds this week. And past this week, I asked that everybody's going to have to start bagging their leaves. It really hasn't been that bad, but I can't believe how late in the season these leaves are falling. Third, this will be the Fourth Annual DPW Toy Drive. Our toy boxes that we use to collect the toys are at the community center and also at our DPW facility. Those toys will be distributed to E-CAP, and E-CAP will be distributing those toys to children within our community. So, I asked that, you know, please drop toys off, buy a puzzle, buy a doll, or whatever is the most welcome toy for all these children in the holiday season. I asked that, please, everybody just grab a toy, drop it in this box, and you'll put a smile on some children's faces. The final day for that will be the Friday before Christmas. So, if you decide to place these toys in a box, please make it the Friday before Christmas, because later on that Friday, early Saturday, we'll be, again, handing the toys over to E-CAP. We had our first annual Get Acquainted with the DPW Day, Saturday, November 25th. I feel it was a great turnout. My, the employees of DPW were there. We had our trucks and equipment displayed in the park, Main Street Park. We had trolley rides explaining all the initiatives that we do here in Tuckahoe, some of the projects that we've implemented, a lot of sustainable projects within. We had demonstrations, and we had food available with coffee, hot chocolate, cotton candy, popcorn. I think that went well. But the highlight of the day, I feel, was when the trucks were parked in the park, more adults than children were honking the horns of the trucks, which I found a little odd. But listen, whatever puts a smile on everybody's face. I loved it. Everybody had a great day. Last but not least, DPW family would like to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday. That's all I have.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
And I want to tell you, that was a fantastic day you had down there at the yard. And kudos to Joey Tavalolo and Anthony DiNicolà. I went with our video guy, Wade, who's hiding in the back there, because he's going to have to get out there in the middle of the night, I remember. But we went around to each piece of equipment. They explained what it's for. He jumped in the bucket truck, brought himself up, probably 50 feet in the air, explained, you know, how, you know, some of these pieces, some of these trucks are very complex computers, really. So, I think when that's rebroadcast, I think our residents can have a much different and better appreciation for not only the equipment that we make an investment in, but the operators of that equipment too. So, it was fantastic. It was really a good day.
Thank you.
Definitely, you should put that on your agenda.
The operators are very knowledgeable, and the machinery today is, you know, computerized and a lot of technical equipment within this equipment. But Joe Tavalolo is a great asset to Tuckahoe. He's very knowledgeable, and it's amazing what he does for my department.
Yes.
He really does. Didn't we try to get Wade up in that bucket truck?
I did, actually. He wasn't having it.
I don't blame him.
Thank you very much. It was a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Camille, anything to report on?
I would like to remind property owners that the second half village taxes are due at the end of the year.
A home bug, okay.
And happy holidays.
Good towner.
Could have started with that. All right, Gary, anything better than that?
Just happy holidays.
And David.
Just real quick, we have something that a lot of residents already use, is the Pango app. Eastchester adopted it not long ago. Mount Vernon has it, Bronxville has it. It's all on our short-term meters now, and we're starting to gain traction. So, it's a fantastic app, right on your phone. Don't get those meter tickets, so get out there and use it. As the councilman is talking about his budget process wrapping up, I'm very jealous, because ours is just gearing up. Department heads will see their, the budget memo will go out later this month, and we're really going to start diving into a lot of this stuff and pension payments and healthcare insurance and things like that. As that wraps up, we are having a meeting this week to get the final audit from last year in our hands and hopefully have them come here in January and tell us what a good job we did. So, look forward to that.
Yep, and I'm sure they will. Thank you. Miscellaneous business, we only have that our next village board meeting is going to be on January 8th, 2018, next year, and that's going to bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports. And tonight, we're going to start with Deputy Mayor Tom Giordano, who is not here. So, I'm going to read a statement that he sent. He had to be called out of town. So, Tom says, "I am sorry to not be able to convey my sentiments in person, but had unexpected business out of town. This is a perfect time of year to take stock of all we have to be thankful for. We live in a safe, relatively affordable, diverse, and vibrant community in close proximity to Manhattan and national and international hubs for travel. Tuckahoe is fiscally healthy and in the midst of a remarkable positive transformation and revitalization. I would like to extend my gratitude to our staff..." I would like to extend my gratitude to our staff for their consistent efforts throughout the year to make our tiny village such a desirable place to live and raise our families. Chief Costanzo and our Police Department for keeping us safe, one of the one hundred safest communities in New York State, in fact, and for leading by example. Frank DiMarco and DPW for their year-round efforts to keep our village looking great and working properly. David Burke and his staff for managing the village effectively and with fiscal soundness and treating our transactions in a personal, cheerful and responsive manner. Our judges and staff for safeguarding our rights and protecting our expectations. Bill Williams and his team for assuring that we adhere to zoning and building codes as we improve our tangible property. Gary Gertson, our village attorney, for providing wise and dependable advice and counsel. Swadeesh and her resourceful staff at the library for providing an incredible variety of educational offerings to our community on a limited budget. A special thanks to our merchants for once again underwriting the cost and expense for decorating our village to look so festive and welcoming during this holiday season. Please, where there is a choice, try to patronize our local establishments. Our merchants are a critical aspect of the financial health of the village as well as key contributors to our daily personal and intimate experience living in the village. Please also continue to keep John Galuzzi, who runs our recreational activities with such care and dedication, in our thoughts and prayers for a full and speedy recovery." And we just spoke to him, should be back very soon. Finally, I would like to extend my heartfelt wishes to our residents and board for a joyful, peaceful and safe holiday season. And again, that message is from your Deputy Mayor, Tom Giordano. Thank you, Tom. So we're going to move on to our member report from Trustee Luise.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to begin with the Tocco Seniors who had a very festive annual holiday party last week at the Davenport. And I would just like to publicly acknowledge the generous donation of the Keller Williams Realty Corporation, whose donation was responsible for making this party so affordable to all the members of the center. And the seniors will be celebrating the holiday season on Thursday, December twenty-first, beginning at twelve noon with a holiday lunch and a visit from Santa. There will be gift bags and raffles handed out, which is another generous donation from the Eastchester-Tocco Chamber of Commerce. They really do a wonderful job that day for the seniors and Santa's there to help with the sing-along as well. And then the center, of course, will be closed during holiday week. They will reopen again on January second. And on behalf of Jennifer Vetromile, she wants me to wish everyone here in the community a wonderful festive Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa and a Happy New Year. And the History Committee had a, as you've heard me speak about over the months, they had a wonderful open house in October. The highlight of the day for the visitors here at the Marble Museum was viewing the volumes of historic items and photos. You can watch that event on our local cable channel. Richard Forliano presented a World War One video on events of the home front during the war. And of course, Arlene Gruber, another wonderful historical person here in the village, presented a program on Tocco as life was in the early nineteen hundreds. Elaine Provizano created a photo display at the library on families from Tocco in the early nineteen hundreds, which was photos that she gleaned from the archives here on the second floor of Village Hall. Nick Sanzano, of course, who's been a, an anchor in the actual videotaping and converting these photos for Prosperity, was also there as well as former Phil, Mayor Phil White. So the History Committee, again, thanks residents and friends for all their support and assistance in taking part in these wonderful programs. And on behalf of the History Committee, a very Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year to all. And I'd just like to close out, and I know the mayor's going to speak about this, Winterfest was a fantastic event last week, but I would personally like to thank Santa's helpers, Samantha and Amanda, who were there in Santa's workshop, helping out with Santa and facilitating all the families that were coming through with their children to take photos. And on behalf of my family, I would like to wish everyone here in Tocco a wonderful festive and healthy New Year. And however you spend that time, spend it wisely and spend it well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Trustee Leo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Tocco Library programs for December and January are as follows. Children, monthly programs, they have kids yoga, puzzles, board games, sing-along with Missy Lee, arts and crafts, Legos and Storytime. Check the website for the calendar and dates and times that this will take place. They also have special programs. Kids' holiday movie, this month will be the Polar Express and that's for kids ages four and up and that will take place on Tuesday, December twenty-sixth at three P.M. Holiday Storytime with special guest Mayor Eckland. That will take place on December twenty-eighth at eleven A.M. and it's open children's from birth to eight years old. Special Storytime with local children's author Christina Lefaro Naclerio, who will read from her new book, What Would Happen If? That's open to children ages five, birth to five years old and that will take place on Thursday, January eighteenth at eleven A.M. The Kids' Book Club is Wonder, Wonder by R.J. Palacio. And that's for grades fourth and fifth grades and that will take place on Friday, January twenty-sixth at four P.M. For teens, the monthly programs are yoga, chess, Wednesday afternoon and video gaming. And the special programs are New Canaan Nature Center, Wildlife Superheroes, that will take place on January twenty-second at four P.M. It's open for children ages eleven and up. Teen movies, Spider-Man: Homecoming, that will take place on Monday, January eighth at three-thirty P.M. And for adults, the monthly adult programs are Wednesdays Movie Matinee, Knit and Crochet Groups, one-on-one computer classes, memoir writing workshops and adult coloring. The special programs are Medicare Workshops, that will take place on Tuesday, January ninth at two P.M. Learn about choosing a Medicare Advantage Plan. Easy Ricky Meditation Session, that will take place on Tuesday, January sixteenth at twelve P.M. Book Club Meeting, that is, the book will be Orphan Train by Christina Baker-Klein and that will take place on Saturday, January twentieth at one P.M. And Wednesday, January twenty-fourth at six-thirty P.M. Bodhi Meditation Workshop, that will take place on Tuesday, January twenty-third at two P.M. And Talk on Preventing Gum Disease with Dr. Bejado Banese and that'll take place on Monday, January twenty-ninth at six-thirty P.M. And those are all the programs for the Tocco Library. And I would just like to wish everyone a happy holiday and a safe and happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Trustee Alfassi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a little bit of business, which is our Building Department. Our Building Department has been giving a briefing, so to speak, with our planning and zoning boards related to the floor area ratio zoning proposal. Basically, what we've done is we've taken an idea that allows for the floor area ratio to be adjusted so that individuals can use perhaps their basement, finishing it and would be able to do that without having to come and ask for permission to do so at the zoning board. But obviously, there's concern, and rightfully so, that we don't want to do something that's going to allow for McMansions to be built. We certainly don't want to do anything that's going to encourage illegal apartments. So those are concerns and rightfully so, that the Planning and Zoning Board are looking at and they're also going to give a report to us. So if it makes sense to do it, then I'm for it. If it makes sense not to, then I'm against it. So it's still under review, but I think it's a good thing to be looking at. And I just, for our folks at home, I wanted to announce that tomorrow, right here in Depot Square in Tocco, Main Street in Columbus, we're going to have menorah lighting for Hanukkah. I know that you, Mr. Mayor, and I, and some of our trustees have attended for the last couple of years and you don't have to be Jewish to attend. It's a lot of fun. It's really a cultural thing and bring your kids, whether you're Jewish or not, it's a nice event to see how other people celebrate religious holidays and they have great food. So that's a big plus. So that's tomorrow at five-thirty P.M. And if you can't make tomorrow, December eighteenth at five-thirty P.M. in Memorial Park in Eastchester will also be a menorah lighting because, you know, we have a few days of menorah in the Jewish faith. So if you can't make it tomorrow at five-thirty, you can make it December eighteenth, again, Memorial Park in Eastchester. And to everyone at home, happy holidays, especially if you're going to celebrate your religious holidays, certainly celebrate it safe. We, the board, extend our love to everyone here in the village and certainly a Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you very much. And thank you for, I know you've been kind of spearheading this whole zoning evaluation and certainly the issue on the FAR. So thanks very much for picking that up. Appreciate it. I'm going to be brief. First thing I want to talk about is since we're thanking people and in the spirit of giving, the General Russo Pope Foundation has given our Police Department, our Motor Unit, a couple of brand-new Harley-Davidson motorcycles. So I want to thank them very much for that. You know, we have a very well-rounded Police Department and when we started what's called the Motor Unit, it really made a big significant difference. A lot of people, I think, questioned it in the beginning, but it just does a whole bunch of things. I know the chief has talked about it, I'm not going to ask him to come back up again, but you know, it makes the department much more efficient in terms of the jobs, the tasks that they perform. It's incredibly great for employee morale and you know what? We give back to some of the other municipalities by our support in, whether it's a parade or a funeral, whereas these municipalities for fifty years plus has done this for the village. So it's time that we gave back and we're doing it now and we're doing it really at no cost. And it's all because of the generosity of the General Russo Pope Foundation. So I want to thank them very much for that. And as Trustee Luise mentioned, we had our Winterfest, our annual Winterfest celebration. We had a wonderful tree lighting ceremony, it was last Saturday night. Tocco's Johnny Galuzzi was down in the square all weekend. It was great to see him and it was wonderful to see Santa Claus down there. And yes, always great to see Santa and we had a lot of excited kids there who were doing the countdown for the tree lighting. So special thanks to Santa, his helpers, and it was a great weekend. We have fire board elections tomorrow. The polls are going to open, it's a very short window, it's from two to nine P.M. And if you live in the village of Tocco, you vote at the Tocco Community Center. You don't vote at the church or anyplace else. All Tocco residents go down to the TCC to vote. And again, that's tomorrow from two to nine o'clock. And finally, I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa and overall Happy Holidays. So please stay safe and have a wonderful New Year. So with that, this is the second opportunity to address the board on anything. And yes, sir, Mr. Steve Baker, Fire Commissioner Steve Baker, I should say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. I apologize in advance for my cold, it's that time of the year. I can see on TV how great my hair looks now, so I don't have your problem. I wish I had, you know, hair like you. I'm glad that you mentioned the election tomorrow. I am running for reelection. Tocco votes, as you said, at the community center. I've been on the board for five years. The way it works is there's five board members, one comes up every year. So and we are the business end of the fire department. We have nothing to do with putting out fires, we have nothing to do with training firemen, we have nothing to do with the operation of the fire department by law. We are the watchdogs for the taxpayers. On my time on the board, we have a, on average, seventeen million dollar a year budget. It's a big business. People may not want to understand that, but government is a business. It's not a not-for-profit business, but it's a business nonetheless. And again, like you mentioned earlier, Mr. Mayor, most of our expenses are payroll, pensions, health benefits. It's not the other stuff that people think of, the fire trucks and the buildings. Now with that, on my time on the board, we have only raised on average the taxes to, oddly enough, one point one-one percent per year, which I think is outstanding. We're trying to keep it low. We built up a big reserve. I know there's been some criticism about that. The reason we've done that is so that we can do repairs and buy new equipment. Our fire trucks are aging rapidly and we are in the process of bidding out for new equipment. We also had to complete the construction work on the North End Station. When I got elected, it was a seven-year project that was going nowhere. And the next project we did was the floor in Tocco and now we're working on Chester Heights. All the buildings are old and they are in a state of disrepair through wear and tear. The good news is with the reserves we've built up, we're not going to bond or we're not going to raise taxes on that. We put that money aside for that, so that's why that was done. It's a big department, even though it's a small town, so to speak. We've had an issue with a lot of business aspects trying to get years of questionable financial practices under control, going for insurance monies that weren't collected from certain members, and I've been an integral part of that. I would also point out that in the village of Tocco, as does Bronxville, assesses the landowners individually for the hydrants, whereas in Eastchester, the unincorporated township, they do not. And that is the basis of the lawsuit that is pending from the town board has actually sued the fire board. We won't, we don't want to, our money, we collect from everybody and it goes into a general pot and we don't think it's proper, I certainly don't think it's proper, voted against it, to have Tocco and Bronxville residents, in essence subsidizing the other residents of the fire district. So that's what I've been doing for the five years I've been on here, been a financial watchdog. I'm, you know, going after the records of the volunteers to make sure that things are proper there. Not every volunteer is a problem, it's certain things and certain individuals. I would hope that the people of Tocco would come out and support and I asked for their votes. I'm, you know, a proud member here, but you know, when they go to the menorah lighting, go down the street and vote, it's from two to nine and it is your tax dollars harder work. Unfortunately, the state sets this election up at a time that is just completely questionable. We've tried to get it moved and we got legislation through Albany to actually get it moved to the regular election cycle. I was a major part of that. Unfortunately, it stalled at the, it was a poison pill put in it, it was stalled at the board of elections. So it's a hard time of year, but I ask you to come out and vote and support me in reelection.
And it's a short window, too. I always thought that was odd that it's two to nine, so.
There's a lot of, I think part of it is it's a relic of a bygone era in terms of this is the way things used to be done. Every fire district in the state of New York, and there's over seven-hundred-and-fifty vote tomorrow, except for six, three of those, I believe, are on Fire Island because there's nobody there. So what happens is sometimes we get very low voter turnout. You know, you're going to pay for this, so you know, step up and vote. And I would hope that you'd vote for me, but at least come out and vote and exercise the democratic process.
It's a big, it's a big budget, seventeen million, a lot bigger than the village's budget, so.
It is, and a lot of people complain about that. And like I said, a lot of it is payroll, pensions.
Sure.
And, you know, healthcare benefits and things like that. I wish it was really cool, new fire trucks and, you know, awesome helicopters and boats and all that other stuff, but that's part of what it is and we watch that stuff religiously.
So it's tomorrow night, there's one position open, there's two candidates, yourself and I believe there's somebody else is running for the position as well. And it's two to nine, you live in Tocco, you vote at the community center.
Absolutely.
Good, perfect. Well, thank you. Thanks for coming down tonight.
Thank you. Happy holidays, Mayor.
And you too. Anybody else wish to address the board? All right, if not, then with there being no other business tonight, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting and I'm looking for a second. Second. This meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so this meeting is adjourned till next year, Tocco. All right, so this meeting is adjourned. Till next year, Tocco. Have a very good evening and a wonderful, safe holiday season. Good night.